I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing as Steve Keagle from Lodge Church will lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you so much for Monticello. We thank you for the beauty you have put in our community and the county. And we thank you, Father, that we can live here and enjoy it. Pray, Father, for every man and woman in this building tonight who gives their time and ability to make it a better place. We pray for your wisdom and good decisions are made, Lord, and honor you and all of you in the name of Jesus.
Roll call, please, Jill.
Ms. Vogt.
Here.
Ms. Lively.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Woodham.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Burris.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mr. Broderick.
Here.
Mr. Brock.
Here.
And Mr. Piercey.
Here.
Jim Quorum.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Is there anyone on that sheet? No one this evening? Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone this evening?
Mr. Schreppler.
Mr. Schreppler, please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to briefly comment on the zoning issue that you have in front of you tonight regarding the gambling establishment and liquor sales. I didn't see any mention in the information regarding the distance between that facility and the church up the street. I know that there's something in our liquor ordinance that requires a specific setback distance. I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed. And I also didn't see any information regarding the planning commission meeting and their disposition on this issue in literature that you'd received. Did you guys get it? And maybe I just didn't? Or I don't see it online at all, as I recall.
It's not required, I don't think.
I'm sorry. It's not a requirement, but I would think being informed would be something that everybody would want to do. And as I recall from attending that meeting, that they did not recommend approval of this. And I just want to make sure you're all aware of that if it's not in your literature.
I have seen no record of that, and I was not apprised of that by the Planning and Zoning Board chairperson, so I think you might be in error. But thank you for your comments this evening.
So you're saying that they did recommend that you approve this zoning change? Or I guess it's liquor ordinance change?
You're done, Steve. I answered your question.
I'm not sure that you did. Are you under the impression that they recommended approval of this?
You're out of words, Steve.
Okay, I didn't think they did. Okay, thank you.
Consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated July 25th through August 14th, 2023. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, July 24, 2023. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, May 15, 2023. Budget report, June 20, 23. Fire report, July 20, 23. Police report, July 20, 23. Permit report, July 20, 23. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we proceed?
I did have one question. Have we distributed money to Main Street yet?
So Main Street asked whether there's a portion, but they've had one allotment.
Yeah.
If the remainder, usually around October or so.
Okay. Because I see it said, I think it said zero, maybe.
It may not have yet.
Okay.
Depends on their fiscal year.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing or seeing no one, would you please take a roll call, Jill?
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Woodham.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Mr. Burris.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
Yes.
And Mr. Piercey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the mayor's report. The Monticello Summer Singers, of which I conduct, will be holding their finale concert this Sunday at 3:00 PM at the Monticello United Methodist Church. There's no charge, and I'm sure that if you came to listen, you'd have a delightful afternoon. Starts at 3:00 and lasts about an hour. Registration for the Monticello Boot Camp Small Business Development Program is open. This program is free to participants, existing businesses or new, and open to anyone who wants to expand their business knowledge. More information or registration can be found at monticellobootcamp.com. Check the job board on the city's website for the area businesses for employment opportunities. And I looked at it not too long, not too many days ago, and there's a lot listed. So look and see, maybe you'll find something you are interested in. Moving on to new business. Ordinance 2023-40 and ordinance amending title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances Concerning Class A Liquor Licenses. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. BNG Spirits LLC, they submitted a request to the council about a month ago to create an additional Class A liquor license. They would like to open a packaged liquor store with video gaming in there at 777 West Bridge Street. To address the comments that were made earlier, this is not a zoning issue. It never went before the Planning and Zoning Board. That's why you never received any information on it. I did, however, share with you, and I believe it was in your agenda packets, floor plan, proposed floor plan, proposed improvements, and then, most recently this evening, some pictures from the interior of the existing stores that they already have. Again, there are five currently Class A liquor licenses. They all have video gaming as well. Most of them are primarily retail establishments. Well, I shouldn't say most of them, the two Circle K's, obviously, but representing the prospective buyer. We have Brain Cotter representing from them, and then Jill Duke is here representing the seller. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions?
So I guess my question would be, as far as the video gaming is concerned and alcohol sales, do we feel like this is going to increase revenue for the city? Or is this going to redistribute revenue that's already taking place? Meaning, are we planning on seeing an increase in the number of people playing these games? Or will people just go from the first to the new place?
So I can't answer the component about the gaming, the liquor license, or the packaged liquor retail part of that. That is something that is in our leakage report, is we are losing business in our community for people going outside to purchase that. So I think we have an opportunity to gain there, but I can't speak for the gaming side. I don't know if that's your wheelhouse or not. I can't.
Well, then, on top of that, though, too, reading the report, it does state that they're going to go ahead and make sure it looks proper, given that it's coming in from bridge. It's not going to look like what we thought it was going to look like. Let's just say it that way. New signage, new things, new everything, and having everything completely redone, and then having the gaming portion put on the back part of the facility. I mean, if you want to say, but I mean, I'm kind of okay with it.
I guess.
It's money. I just wait, but I mean, it is.
My question is, how competitively priced are you going to be? Mind you, it's expensive to go to the other places here to buy liquor.
On the market.
Beer prices are relatively competitive throughout, but when you factor in, if I were to guess, half of the population of Monticello has a Sam's or a Costco account, and you can buy really good alcohol at a really good price. So.
Revenue.
Are we, revenue, yes. But how do we know this will be heavily supported? And to have another gaming facility within so far of Circle K, who's got one?
I mean, really, we have at least four that are, well, five that are jumping out of my head. We don't need another gaming place. And frankly, if people are buying alcohol out, like you said, outside of town, they're buying it at Sam's and Costco, they're saving money doing it there. I don't think we need another place.
The thing, though, that with her, what she researched, Callie, I'm sorry, what Callie researched, Illinois, if you have a liquor license, you award one, you are completely, they give automatically a gaming license.
Yes.
That's the state of Illinois.
I agree.
So if we stop liquor license, then that wards off any other businesses that we want in downtown or anything else. If we stop this one, no.
No.
Let me correct you, just one second. It's not any liquor license. It has to do with the poor license, not necessarily the packaged liquor.
Okay.
It's the gaming.
So I mean, I guess now would be the time for me to say this. Voting is limited to a yes or no for the most part. I want to thank this company for listening, because I know myself, I provided feedback to Callie, I provided that to the business. They answered every single one of the questions that I kind of had. So I thank them for that part. Because, yes, they, you know, all of the fears I had as far as signage, appearance, all of that was answered, and this is wonderful. It now comes down to whether or not I feel personally that it's appropriate and that it's a need for the city. So I want to make sure that they know that I'm appreciative of their efforts. That's great.
I think the other thing of consideration is that building has been vacant, and it'd be nice to have something in there. And this, I talked about the sign, it's going to look nice, it's coming right into town. You know, from a business standpoint, let them, you know, it's a competitive, but if it works, it works. I mean, I can tell you what I know about gaming is that we have not reached the saturation point as far as gaming. They will make money, and so will every other gaming facility in Monticello. We have not even come close to the saturation point when it comes to gaming. But I mean, I think the opportunity to have something in there and for it to look nice and not be vacant, I think this is an opportunity we need to take advantage of.
But to your point, when it falls, because they will not be looking for you with Sam's and Costco and people buying elsewhere, then there's an empty building with nobody paying rent, nobody maintaining.
They're selling the building.
Yes.
And that's been the tricky thing, is this is an opportunity to have this building sold.
I would rather have an occupant in there for the time that we can. We can't predict if it will maintain or not. We can't predict if it will be profitable or not. But to have a viable business coming into town as opposed to, you know, the old Monticello Drugs that does have an occupant, but the windows are all still papered up and nobody knows what's in there, I would much rather have this than what we have sitting.
Anyone else?
Yes, I think we were talking about revenue and also all these other options that are going to expand the community, but we don't look at the impact that gaming has on individuals, on individuals that have gambling problems. They're the ones that are frequenting these gaming places. And I think it's not appropriate to keep expanding, and the way that the state has done this is kind of a waste of communities, because they're hostage by saying, well, if you give these people a four liquor license, they can have, they can have a video game. And that brings in a whole nother issue, you know, people have drinking problems, gambling problems, and they're the ones that are going to be frequenting these places. That's, I think it's inappropriate.
Larry, I have one more.
Yeah, Callie, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't address this earlier. Mr. Schreppler also mentioned the setbacks, as you had in your reading. It does meet the setback requirements of 100 feet from a church. It's more than that, and that's measured from the property line of the location or parcel that is selling alcohol or distributing alcohol to the point of the building where worship occurs. So you have more than 100 feet there.
Okay. I knew that when he asked the question, I just didn't want to say anything.
Well, in case anyone else had any questions, I just wanted to think about it.
It wouldn't be this far if that hadn't been checked.
Exactly. We do our due diligence here.
That's how that works. Anyone else?
Can we get a sense from the community? Has this made the rounds? Has anybody heard feedback?
None.
Just a few people I've talked to, you know.
You know, we got rid of the second reading, and I don't know, I'm not saying this is, we should table it, but is this something that worth getting feedback? Will we get feedback?
I think there was enough time between the last council meeting and this council meeting for any feedback to be shared that was going to be shared, so I don't think that's probably appropriate.
With various people, and I mean, there was not, you know, again, we all run in different crowds, but you know, the feedback I received was, wouldn't it be nice to have, you know, like the bowling alley used to have the drive-through window, pick up a case on your way home and whatnot? So not that all my friends do that.
Not opposed to it, but of course, the gambling part that I don't think.
Yeah. Well, then, that's the best part about the redesign thing, is that it's going to be hidden from the street. It's not going to look like.
It still exists, though.
It still exists. That's my point. But that's what the state of Illinois does. It's nothing we don't control.
We can't control.
Could we try not to talk on top of each other like the mayor's doing right now?
Aye, aye.
So we can hear the discussion. And I think you had the floor, Brian.
I was just going to say, the three people that I have discussed with, and not in any kind of official capacity or even requesting feedback, but just kind of overhearing the session, there was three people that I spoke to that were opposed, for various reasons, whether they felt like we didn't need it, or they didn't feel like it was viable, or the appearance, the expression of what it might look like or might turn into, you know, kind of what this community needed, I guess.
Basically, the same thing.
Right, yeah.
May I ask a question? So like with Circle K, the restaurants, bars, since they already had a liquor license, they could put the gaming in without coming to the council?
We actually changed the liquor license from a packaged liquor for both Circle K gas stations to a Class A for that purpose, so they can add gaming. They came specifically before the council to ask, and that was granted. The other three already had that.
Okay. So is that where some of this difference is coming from potentially then?
Could be.
Because I think, you know, that the others already had the ability, so then they could add it with oversight.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2023-48 and ordinance amending title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances Concerning Class A Liquor Licenses?
So motion.
Is there a second? Any more comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may have a roll call, please.
Ms. Vogt.
Yes.
Ms. Lively.
No.
Mr. Denise.
No.
Mr. Woodham.
No.
Mr. Reed.
No.
Mr. Burris.
No.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Broderick.
Yes.
Mr. Brock.
No.
Mr. Piercey.
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Thank you for coming back. Appreciate your applying. Moving on. Audit, presentation, I can talk sometime. Is Steve on the line? Okay, Steve had a death in his family, in his family, and is not able, he thought maybe he could, you know, talk to us long distance, but obviously not. We'll reschedule him for the next council meeting, if that's okay, right? This is going to be a real show up in the night. Alderman's reports. Ms. Lively? Nothing? John? Brian? Thomas?
Nothing.
Mary?
I want to share with the council that there's a collaborative effort among the school districts in Piatt County, Monticello, Bement, Sierra Bordeaux, and Deland Weldon, to use the Monticello Christian Church as a relocation location if it's ever necessary to leave our school facilities. Tomorrow morning at 8:30, we have staff members from Bement, Sierra Bordeaux, Deland Weldon. Over 28 agencies have been invited, and potentially, you know, media have been notified, but we are going to walk through what we need to have, do need to redefine. So the three smaller districts in the county are doing our exercise tomorrow. Monticello, being a larger district, will do their exercise here in a couple of months. It's the kind of thing that no school personnel ever want to have to put into place, but I will say this time and time again, I'm very proud of our Piatt County schools and the agencies in Piatt County. Chief Ross will be there, Chief Rupke will be there, Terry and city crew will be there. And again, those corresponding agencies in the surrounding communities have done a great job putting memorandums of understanding in place, working together to make sure, no matter where an incident might take place in Piatt County, we're going to keep our students safe. So just to make sure the council is aware, or the county schools, Monticello is our relocation area. You are aware.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, I'm good.
Rodney? Thomas? Glad you're back, man.
Thank you. Good to be back.
I'll bet it is.
Just to reach out to the city guides, streets, our State Street situation obviously turned out great. I think our contractor performed admirably. Dunham Company was under the gun, and they got it done, and it looks good. It's smooth and flat. We'll put some stripes on it one of these days, but I think they did really well. I'm proud of our guys for the work they did on the sewers and the gutters and stuff.
They did a shit.
That all done in time. We pushed them hard. It was hot, it was tough work, and I think they did a great job. It looks good. That's all.
Thank you. Eric? I would like to welcome Tom back.
Thank you.
Tom, make sure your recovery is doing well.
It's going.
Everything's going okay?
Going very well.
Besides that, I'm good. Michael?
I'm Echo. Wendell is a resident of State Street. It's been remarkable just how well that whole project went from the time the resurfacing started to the time it was over. I know one night, they were out there until about 11:30, maybe later, I don't know, we saw them out there that late. So they got it done. It looks great, and so feel good about how it turned out.
I was talking to Terry about that project right when it started, and he told me not to stay off of State Street, don't cross it, and don't drive on it. And I listened to him, except I did have to go to the gas station, so I did go across. But there were so many people, there were so many cars on there checking it out. As they, when they tore it up, I couldn't believe that they ever got it done.
So when we see the bricks.
Yeah. Police chief's report. Rob?
Same thing with the [inaudible]. This has been a great thing. I've been a part of reification drills that have been absolutely hot lessons. This has been the best one for the ROV that we have. So I'm very excited about doing this tomorrow morning. Luckily, we aren't doing it with, you know, 500 students. It's, I think, teachers and non-certified staff on the buses before we start introducing kids to it. But this is going to work out very, very well for our area of schools. Along that same [inaudible], school starts Wednesday. Unfortunately for the teachers, unfortunately for us parents, super excited for my kids to go back to school. We did do an Alice active shooter training at the Calhoun Library last week. Those things tend to poke around during the beginning of a school year. Deputy Ross, the county school resource officer, and I will be doing a school safety presentation at a middle school this Friday. We'll kind of touch on, obviously, how to act in school and how to act with social media and cell phones. So we're getting that out of the way early. We did have two new hires, Dave Lansford, his first day is today. They're actually on violation report, or I would have had them come in. And then John Hart is our new hire. He starts the academy next.
Any questions of Chief Ross?
Chief Hoff, do you guys do active shooter training?
We will do it whenever we are ready. I'm certified to teach it through 2025. I think right now, myself and Deputy Ross, I think are the only two that are Alice certified to do it. We had another one, but their certification lapsed. But I've done it for deputy educator, for the schools, like I said, for the library. So whoever wants it, I have no problem going in and going over. It takes about hour and a half to two hours, depending on how much back and forth there are, but we can get it popped out pretty well.
And schools are now required to do trainings in.
Yeah, I think Monticello schools, if I remember, I think the middle school we are doing in October, and then still need to meet up with Washington and.
Any other questions? John Rupke, fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We ran 45 calls last month. Had some good training. Actually, we had AMRA come in for the members of Piatt County Firefighters Association. They did CO and natural gas training, which was very, very informative. In case there's any natural gas or CO emergencies, we're prepared for that. And then for the third week, or third year in a row, we had water safety, and I want to thank the lifeguards at the Monticello pool. They, we all jumped in the pool and they showed us how to safely pool, pull victims out of the pool, and they did a great job, so we really do appreciate that. Of course, every Thursday, we do all our equipment maintenance and so forth. This month, we also waxed all our vehicles. I'm sure it took us about four hours, but we got a nice coat of wax on our vehicle. Maintaining. Some extra things we did, we did public safety at the fireworks this year. About in Piatt, it's kind of their territory, but they asked for some help. We did the movie 911 Square in July, before the water leaks over at U.S. Field from the [inaudible]. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of chief? Thanks, chief. Appreciate what both of you do. It's been very great here for the last several months, so thank you. City administrators report. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would never tell you to not go down State Street. Advise.
Told me not to.
So with school starting, I would advise to avoid Washington Street, Market Street, and Crass Road during certain times of the day. Just that's why.
I don't go down there anytime when they're going or coming. I stay away from it.
So State Street, they came in and cut the asphalt to raise the new, replaced manholes and valves and whatnot, so there's a bunch of holes on State Street that you will encounter, and I would advise to avoid that again for a little bit. They'll be pouring concrete tomorrow. The pavement marking, the asphalt has to cure for 10 to 14 days, so maybe next week for some pavement marking. Next park, water tower. Next Park Water Tower, that contractor is tentatively scheduled to begin September 5th. And I've not had any experience like Chief Ross with emergency planning, but Mary Vogt has done a tremendous job in stepping up and kind of taking charge of that. Very important. Hopefully, hopefully never needed plan, but I think it's, it seems to be a pretty good plan, and a lot of thought and discussion has gone into that, so I would echo thanking all the agencies' discussion and input today, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I add a question? Is there anything going on with Main Street and Ward Two and Tom's Ward, Ward Three? Because, I mean, you drive down that, it's like whack-a-mole. I mean.
Pavement, pavement rehabilitation?
Yeah. I feel, I feel like we're spending a lot of money on just filling the holes instead of actually just doing it.
Tentatively, the next two streets that have been identified have been Grant and the north end of Buchanan.
Okay.
I know Main Street, east of Independence, the Piatt.
It's, yes.
And, and then the South Independent Street are two other streets.
Yeah, you get, like I said, it's like whack-a-mole.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, I mean, they're identified. We can talk about some budget stuff coming up soon. Department heads are going to be giving me their budgets, I think, the first week of September, so we'll be getting into the thick of things and the.
That's mining, mining, or, or sports time.
I would add, I think we've done a tremendous job in allocating funds to the tune of over $5.5 million in roads from 2016.
My biggest thing is, like, when you look down, when you walk, say you're walking your dog, you look down when you're walking your dog, and then the asphalt has cracked so bad, you can see the original brick. I mean, it's kind of it's bad. And it's just filling the holes nonstop, and we redo them every year, and we need to kind of make a solid effort to make it solid.
I appreciate what you're saying, Eric, but I think you're forgetting, we only get so much money, motor fuel tax funds, and it doesn't, it only, it doesn't go a long way. We do, we do the best with what we have available and have, have to sort of prioritize what we do, and I think we've done a good job of doing that, so.
You, we have, we have. You are very correct. We have, but my biggest thing is, how much more are we spending on actually not just doing it instead of just doing it, redoing it, redoing it? That's my biggest thing. I feel like we waste more money on redoing it every year than actually just doing it.
I don't think, I don't think the repairs that we do on a yearly basis, I don't think it's that expensive, if I'm wrong.
State Street was 3/4 of a million dollars. We don't come near that in Patch, obviously.
No.
But I, I mean, I'm not arguing.
I'm not either. I agree with you.
A stretch of Main Street and Independent Street, as well as Grant and Buchanan.
We're getting there. It's just going to take time to get them all.
I think it'll, yeah, that's fine. This one, we also did that segment Livingston right in front of the, so that, you know, maybe we can piggyback some of these if there's, if there's a stretch, there's a.
And that is a stretch, yeah. That's not.
That, I mean, that's, that was one that was done fast, too. I mean, it was done in the morning.
Yeah.
In two days.
Yeah.
That's one block that was desperately needing it as well.
Yeah, if we piggyback states, that went on to the State Street project, it was needed.
Oh, no. Anyone else have anything? Herring? Yes, you may.
Oh, it wasn't spam?
Okay. No, anything from me from the city last week was probably spam.
Is there a deadline?
I know this Lively had one, Tom had one. Do you have one, too?
You asked me to get you some Amazon cards or some Apple cards. Get them? Well, no.
Well, is that a spam?
Yes.
I sent you an email back.
Yeah.
I played a couple, I played a lot.
You sent me an email, too, and I responded to it, and I went back to saying, this is not an act.
That's what, that's what.
Make sure you look at the actual email address, though, because that's not, so I got the same thing, but I'm used to getting so many now. I immediately look up and it, the email address is like J.S.
I called Mindy.
So that's your clue.
Why is the mayor using the Gmail account?
I said, hey, you have, you asked me for advice, and I was like, huh. I asked. Yeah, and email, I was like, I don't know if I need to respond to this.
Hey, you asked me, hi, Andrea, do you have any time? I need your help today. I'm like, fly with the mayor, need my help.
What was yours, Tom?
Basically same thing. I need to talk to you about something. Yes, I would love to.
Now, the bad part about Tom is.
He doesn't return phone.
I know.
He did call.
I can't.
I called him.
I asked Mara if I should change my email, my password, and she said it won't do any good.
No.
So if you get anything squirrely, I don't usually contact you by email anyway. It's usually a call, so that's usually safer. Okay? Okay, good. Anybody else have anything? I feel better now. Anyone else have anything? If not, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
See you in two weeks.